Where are they located? We have seven city hall, don't we?
No, no.
We're gonna talk about that a little bit down in discussion, but that's okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Speaking of the police issues throughout the town, where are the negotiations with the contract?
If you look on the thing right there, it's the second thing to talk about in the discussion. We'll be there in a couple of minutes.
What's this police chief that didn't say?
It's an update, update on the police department.
Thank you.
Anybody else, audience comment? Okay, first of all, the discussion is not written down here, but the Edison Plaza area that Mr. Snyder just brought up, we do have signs that now have been put back in. We used to have no luring signs a years ago, get rid of them, so we're gonna put them back in. So, the people that like to sit there all night, days and nights, and put all their garbage out front is gonna come to an end because the police, as of this weekend, will start, when they come in, they're just gonna check if anybody's sitting over there. No luring signs there, so you can't say you don't know about it. We're not gonna put bigger garbage cans there so people can put more garbage on Market Street, that's not, that's not the goal. So, I'm just letting everybody know that if anybody's mad because they get a ticket for luring, that's where it's gonna happen at. Two things for the police department, the police chief update. I anticipate presenting on the next medium of July 11th, a contract to counsel the Harley Chief. So, we're not too far away from that yet. The K-9 program, I also, I suspended that, I'm planning on bringing that back. I have to meet with Officer Hawes this week. He's never had a contract before, the contract will define exactly what we expect of the K-9 unit and what, and hours and everything else that's involved. So, as long as he agrees to the contract, we will be bringing the K-9 unit back for the safety of the officers and for the betterment of the city. I've never really been a big proponent of the police dog, but it's, clearly it doesn't cost us anything. We have a veterinarian that takes care of things for free, we have Wise Markets that donates food and things like that, so it's a matter of getting down to the fine details. But you have to remember, you know, there's not enough documentation, that's why I suspended it, but this new contract will put an end to that. And the other issue is what, you know, is it used for drugs, is it used for patrolman's safety in a building, something? And that happens a lot, they find a door open in a store or something, instead of officer running, they send the police off, or the police dog in first. The dog is not 12 or 14 years old, it's only four years old, so it's just getting into the prime of its training and everything. And I believe we have too much invested in that dog, not to continue with it. So, as long as the contract works out, which I think it will, hopefully, you know, we'll announce next week what day that starts again, but we'll be talking about it.
Mister Mayor, is that contract going to be, are you gonna be using the same model as Seale and Swob is using with their K-9 people? Is it Seale and Swob or?
I didn't see the Seale, I don't know.
Hummel's War that was in the paper last week?
I didn't see the contract, no. I got other contracts, put something together out of the other ones, Seale and Swob's not one.
Dave, my two questions.
Yes, you're given.
The contract with the police chief, are we gonna be allowed to see that prior to?
Yes, yes.
And also the contract with the K-9 dogs?
Yes. Yeah, because I asked you to let me sign them, so you have to see them.
Back to the K-9 dog, being the fact that what happened this past weekend with another officer that were down because of an injury, I hate to see us take another officer off the street with a K-9 because every two weeks he goes to Scranton, Wilkes-Barre for trainings, we lose a whole day of manpower. Then he goes to train in Lancaster, and he goes up to Wilkes-Barre to have the dog get a bath.
That's only once a month.
Once a month, it was twice though, at one time.
There was a lot of times he was out of town, yeah. But I think you can define that by the contract that they set up, or the contract that, you know.
What he has to do.
We find a way to do what he can't do with the dog by itself, you know.
Because I know, you told me Dave, it was like six months, the dog did zero.
Yep, that's what I'm saying, there's not, there's not enough stuff documented. If it's not documented or not, whatever it is, the new contract will allow everything to be documented, so. Yeah, there were just whole months it wasn't, the dog wasn't used. And then they tell me it was used, and they didn't write it down, well again, it's all documentation now. It doesn't go by the contract, it's, it's an issue.
Can we find somebody closer to train the dog instead of running to Wilkes-Barre? It costs us a whole day.
There's three, there's somewhere in Wilkes-Barre, there's somewhere in Lancaster, and then Sunbury, so they alternate. They do it somewhere in Sunbury, they do it somewhere in Wilkes-Barre, they do it somewhere in Lancaster. So, it's a group of those dog trainers that just go back and forth. So, he's only traveling, what, three months, I guess, out of the year, four months out of the year versus three. Well, no, he's going to Lancaster one, one-third of the time, Wilkes-Barre one-third of the time, one-third of the time here.
But there is a cost because the officer's paid through the city.
Yep, and he's not here right now, that's fair.
I have a question.
Yep.
Doesn't Tony Jordan out in Littleburg train dogs yet, police dogs?
I don't know. A lot of people train them.
He's a, he's a.
No, we said, I know, years ago, Bill Lawrence trained them, we talked about them, so it's different.
Yeah, but I think he still does train them.
Mister Mayor, would Sunbury Animal Hospital maybe do a little volunteer on washing the dog?
I believe they do, they do the dog for free.
Yes, that's wonderful, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, currently injured or not, how many officers do we have on force as?
We've had 11, we've had 11.
11.
Now we have knee surgery, we have a broken leg.
I understand that. When are we going to get those numbers back up?
Up to the end of the year, it comes budget time, find money to get them back up.
Well, there never seems to be money for the officers because everything else seems to be addressed.
Well, that's why we have budget meetings, that's what you have to talk about.
So, you can't recruit new, young police officers or get interns or something like that?
We will be, we will be advertising to get a list together. What that means is people will be advertising for the civil service procedure to allow people to apply to be a police officer. That'll take us the rest of the year, but I want to get that done by the end of the year, so if we do hire anybody, we can put them on right away. It's all civil service for the police departments.
What's the base pay starting for a police officer in the department?
Well, it's up to me right now, by the, by the, the old contract, and the contract is still in arbitration, so we don't know what that is, to be honest with you. And the written part of the contract, I believe it's 45 or 46. That was changed in the contract negotiations, it allowed me to do what I want, depending if you get officers of, right out of the academy or some guy that moves from seven years' experience in the Attorney General Office, for example, stuff like that. But that, that'll all be negotiable. But again, our contract is in arbitration right now, we're waiting, so we don't have, you know. That's gonna be a big, big bearing on what we can hire and can't hire at the end of the year for the civil.
Yeah, that'll get you people, whatever they're paying.
Oh, yeah.
Is that unionized?
Right, we're trying to get them paid towards hospitalization, so that's, that'll, that'll probably make itself one, that'll be part of it.
Is that unionized?
Oh my heavens, yes.
Yes, yeah.
Police Department's union, yes.
And do the police officers have to live in this town?
No.
No?
Nope. Anything else?
On the funny side, I felt bad. About two weeks ago, about 3:20 in the morning, of course, I was sound asleep, my air conditioner's in the bedroom window closed, and I thought somebody was doing the Mexican hat dance out in front of my house. The guy that lives next door upstairs had his window open and this, this pandemic music, I, I was just, I hadn't called the cops. I tried, I couldn't go back to sleep, and I felt bad about calling him. I really did, I felt stupid. It was 3:20 in the morning, and God love him, they came, you know, and knocked on the door. But by then, I, the guy must have looked out the window, turned out the light, shut the door, shut the window. He wouldn't answer the door. Of course, he doesn't speak English, and I was sitting there with the cop, and I said, "What would you do?" He said, "Well, I don't know what, I'd have done that."
Mister Mayor, I'd like to commend you for bringing back the K-9 dog because with the drugs running rampant throughout the centers, us behind the valley and Vine, we're gonna have prostitution, there's gonna be human trafficking. That dog is going to be well worth the money you spend on the training.
Anything else? Okay, just a little help track a little bit, the sports historic destination, and that's, gonna touch basically with what, what Bob Snyder said back there about, you know, the walking thing, but, you know. Economic development is always tied into investment, and investment is clearly what we need in the city somewhere. We sit there, we talk, we don't have enough money in our, in our coffers to hire more police officers, we don't have money to do all kinds of things that we want to do with. And that's basically because you have a pretty, a pretty stagnant tax base, and the city is shrinking, you know, every 10 years we do a, a census, and we lose about a thousand people, so we're down under 10,000 now. But that's what we do, that's what council does, we fight to be able to bring new industry in, bring new business. Everybody talks about industry, but believe me, there's not a mayor in the eastern coast of the United States who wasn't trying to bring industry in, it's just not there, it's just not available, you know. And industrial jobs have gone, you know, the world's not that great of a place. We, we need to fight for each business and each property that we have in the city of Sunbury. We need to fight to get new people to come in. So, if that means a Dunkin' Donuts opens up because they built a Schickling Middle School by there, or because thousands of people come to our sporting events, whatever it may be, that's what keeps those businesses. That's why, if you go down here to the 4th and R Street, that's why Sonoco has the investment they put in, that's why Burger King put in, that's why we keep on trying to get more and more people. That's why we're concerned about the Celletex site, what's going in up there, because we need something up there to help the tax base. So, every little thing that you do is, helps along. We clearly talk about history in this city, and we, you know, we sit here with the two working Edison turbines, the only two in the world that actually work, that he built with his hands, and we have them in the garage, and they're, they're safe, don't get me wrong, but there just needs to be a place for those to be there. Needs to be a historic place, a centerpiece that we can build off of. If that's where the walking tour starts, if that's where, whatever the history starts, but we don't need Fort Augusta, I shouldn't say we don't need Fort Augusta, we don't need to start at Fort Augusta, we need to start at the city of Sunbury, early 1900s. There are hundreds of people, not just in this room, in the city of Sunbury, that have old pictures and old things of their grandfathers or whatever may be relatives, and every day that the older people pass, and I'm one of them, it disappears, that stuff ends up in garbage cans and landfills and things like that. And, and I've always said about it, I just call it a historic library, I'm not sure what we're gonna call it, but there's just tons of people out there keep bringing things up to me. What, what I got, I had a team from Bridgewater, New Jersey, come up to play in the softball tournament a couple of weeks ago, and the guy calls him, his concern is he wants to play softball because he wants to get the afternoon off so he can take his kids to Knobles Grove. You know, and we talk about, we talk about the ATM park out there, or whatever they call it, I don't know officially what they call it. ATV parks, that's what it's called, is, out in the county, and that's, that's one of those things that. So, we need to get outside the city and, and bring people in, and if it's Fort Augusta, if it's the Fort Augusta, like I say, if it's, it's Lake Augusta, whatever it may be, there's gotta be a way to get them in for one reason and keep them in here so they spend money on our shops and our businesses, or whatever it may be. That's the constant battle that you have to put up with, and that's what, and that's what I'm trying to get, and, and like that, in the newspaper, I think, printed about the Little League thing, we don't, we're not even Little League in the city of Sunbury, but because the facility was so nice, they're starting a, what they call 50/70, if you know anything about baseball Little League. Little League uses, it's usually 46 and 60-foot bases. But what happens is they lose a lot of kids when they get to be 13, because now you have 90-foot bases, now you're playing in like the Philly Stadium. Well, they lose a lot of kids because kids aren't big enough and aren't mature enough, can't handle that stuff. So, Little League has come out with what they call 50/70, 50-foot base, 70, or 70-foot base, 50-foot mound. So, we have portable mounds, so what I did is I said, "Hey, we're gonna try that in the city of Sunbury." So, the, was it July 13th, the 18th, there's gonna be eight teams coming from out the entire state of Pennsylvania, from different angles of Pennsylvania, parts, they're gonna come to Sunbury to play that. Now, I don't know how many eight teams you're gonna bring, but I, I'll tell you, there's nothing that gets followed more than the little boys, young boys' baseball programs, there's usually moms and dads, and daughters, and sons and grandsons and grandfathers and things like that, so. But that's, that's a weekend, that's a good weekend for the Dunkin' Donuts and the Burger Kings and the Soncos and all that may be.
Can I just make a comment? As far as incentives, when these baseball teams come in, is there any incentive to get them to stop at the local businesses instead of the Dunkin' Donuts?
We do that, I don't know what they're gonna do for baseball, and we're gonna try to get a package, because Cheryl's been working this for years. We give a regular 8 and 11, like an envelope, and we'll, SRI usually puts in a list of stores, we'll put any, we'll put it, you know, we buy like swimming passes for them, give them swimming passes so the kids can go over there and go down the water slide in between games and things like that, but that's how we promote, and, and we invite any business at all that can put something in there, when, you know, the other thing is, I always tell them to eat directions, get out of town, I always run them down 4th Street to Market and make it right, so at least I try to go as many stores that I can get them by versus just saying, "Well, just go out the end of 4th Street here, go out the front," because we don't have enough business on the front street.
I just, I feel like there's like a little miscommunication as far as some things go, because I'm the owner of the Rocker Streets, New York Rocker Street. I know when I first opened up, I wasn't aware that I could purchase a $15 meter per month pass. I was always told about the yearly, but I have a yearly lease at the squat for that, but I was never told about the monthly pass for $15. I wasn't aware that the lot backed by Burger King is actually cheaper to park in than on the street parking. Is there any way to kind of make sure people are aware that there's these things going on? That parking in the lot behind Burger King is cheaper to park for like the Groggs Club members?
Do you go to the SRI?
Do what?
Do you go to any of the SRI meetings?
No, I haven't yet, not yet.
And I'm not up past this, but seriously, next time, go see Megan, she's sitting back there, and, and go to their next meeting and bring that up, because that's the kind of stuff that we need to talk about, what we can, if anything, can do. And it sort of gets on what Bob was talking about before, the parking too.
Yeah.
To see some sort of signage, we talked about it for a long time, and we really never come up with a solution on how to do it. But that's exactly what SRI does, that's the kind of stuff that they get involved in, they have committees, and that type of thing also, and they bring recommendations back to us, or, like I say, we, if you can just come up with an idea, we'll get together and talk about it.
Isn't the stipulations different on the $15 a month ticket than, than the year payment ticket?
Yeah, $15 for the lots only, theater tickets for the song. Nearly one.
Yeah, $15 is not on the streets.
Yeah, for any.
You didn't say that.
Yeah, I know that, I know that $15 is for the lots, not the street parking, but I was, it was never brought to my attention because I'm, I'm feeding the meter for 12, 13 hours a day or whatever, and I'm just like, where is this gonna end? And then it was probably brought to my attention, there's the $15 a month pass to park in the lot, and I'm like, "Why didn't nobody say this to me?"
I remember you doing that.
Well, Mr. Walker, like, Dave said, talk to Megan, because I had a meeting with her three weeks ago, and she's delighted now of the, of the how to parking guide.
Well, she does make an awesome video for the podcast, I think.
This might be a really good time to plug into Megan, you can get into better detail to about the promotions card and the member-to-member discounts. We've really been trying hard, SRI has been working very hard to connect both its membership and then also the community members with our local businesses to receive a discount. If you, if you have the SRI card, you get so much off of a purchase, and that's really trying to encourage, like, buy local, keeping everybody here.
Will that be included in the package for the baseball people or softball?
Probably not, because I believe SRI is selling them, what, $5 a card? And you earn your money back if you didn't purchase, really, it's, it's a good discount card, but it's through SRI, not through the city.
Something like that.
Yeah, something like that.
Yes, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Do you know that the Historical Society, we do genealogy three times a week, and there's people from all over come here?
Yep, I knew they had their certain amount of people, but it's, it's the people, like I'm saying, that talk about the city itself, that's why I'm just, and I'm not competing against the story, I, I, it's not, it was never my intent.
No, I don't mean that, I mean, people are coming in.
That's, and that's what.
I sent them to the Edison, because that's where my son works, yeah.
We could just send them by the turbines on the way in.
Speaking of the historical side, what are they doing with the old prison, I know it's.
That's North, that's Northumberland County, we, we.
Northumberland County?
Historical Society has nothing to do with that, city of Sunbury has nothing to do with that.
Are they gonna tear it down?
The last word we got was that they're going to bring somebody in, doing an evaluation on it again, whether it's feasible to do anything with the, with these.
Well, wasn't there a meeting after the recent press comp, press release by Kimberly Best? Was there a meeting?
If there was a meeting, I mean, it was with the county, we know nothing about that.
Yeah, it wasn't a public meeting, I think they had some discussion.
The commissioners might have met with somebody.
Well, I believe that there was a meeting now at the Americas.
That was a few people we know. No.
That wasn't a county, county was.
It wasn't a meeting.
No, I, I don't know about.
Oh, you're talking about the county, county, I thought everybody meeting county had.
There was no meeting. This is over clear.
Right, right, but this was, was after Kim Best's press conference that she had.
The county, after Kim Best had her announcement, there was a county meeting following Tuesday. That involved county commissioners, and the engineer, and the project leader. And that, that's all.
And speaking of promotion, how is, is the Riverfront continuing to be on a larger scale promoted? Like, I'm still waiting for Brett Michaels to come here. Well, that was two years ago, where is he?
I'm waiting to, bring him on.
I mean, that was in, that was in an article in the Daily Item, Brett Michaels is looking to come here, party down, where is he?
Back here, Francis, that's Francis where he's at.
He left, he left.
Just like Brett Michaels.
Well, Julie, the city didn't say he was coming, did they?
Well.
No.
Did you have that retracted?
Julie, I wanted to see DC, I didn't want to.
I won't say, I won't be saying Brett Michaels, because that's what was in the paper, and if that wasn't true, it should have been retracted.
I think that was stated right on over. It wasn't stated.
It was Fisher, he should have made that statement.
Anybody else? All right, well, next on the agenda, I have the Sunbury Norfolk Southern Blight removal project. I want to present that to council tonight, and, and I guess I'm here for discussion on that, what that is. You know, we talked about railroad closures for the, I don't know, Jim, but last year, I guess, there's been things bouncing around up and down, what we want to do, what we don't want to do. One thing I can say from six terms of being a mayor is, there's nothing, there's nobody harder to deal with than the railroad. About two, three weeks ago, Jim was in part of that tour or something, they sent a gentleman up from Atlanta, and another person came in where she was from, but anyway, there was half dozen of those. We're looking at six intersections, Linden and Third, Church and Penn, Third and Chestnut, Third and Woodland, Third and Race, and Packer Street, up where we call the Willhole Building, which is now where Bimbo Bakery is at. And the reason I mention these six, these are not all closures, these are six intersections. Some of them are, we're talking railroad closures, and some are talking about properties that the railroad owns. Now, every time you guys drive by a railroad track in the city, you're always gonna see a dead area of ground, it has no sidewalks, it has six-foot weeds, and it's just a mess, and that's what we have in the city of Sunbury a lot. We're not unlike anybody else that's the same way. Because you get a big railroad company, they don't have time to come around and cut those down, so it's usually, Jim or Dale are sending somebody out to cut the weeds down, cut the trim down, try to make it look somewhat. We send them letters, the Rick's Code office sends, and we send letters off the railroad because they have sidewalks they never fix. They're, you know, the guy across the street, we're giving him a fine for not fixing his, so we, you know, we try to work together. But for the first time in all the years I've been involved, Norfolk Southern sent these real estate people up to talk about actually making a difference. So, I put it together with the, with the Blight, and talked, and I took it to the redevelopment authority and talked with them at the same time. So, all I'm asking council for tonight is, I told the railroad that I, what they're talking about is actually cooperating and working with some things, with some of these properties. So, like, Linden, or Third and Linden, you know, there's, there's development there, that is one we're gonna talk on a closure. Church and Penn Street, if you're familiar with Church and Penn Street, the goal would be, is to make a one-way traffic from Fourth heading east, and then, that would be blocked off, and you'd make a U-turn. The railroad owns property, back where there's Arns, it's some sort of a car dealer, I don't know if it's a car dealership.
Towing company.
Towing company, okay, Arns Towing. And between that property and the railroad track the railroad owns. So, the deal, the, not the deal, but the cooperation agreement there would be to get some land up there, we could physically put a street down, make a U, make a U, go right back out on 4th Street, going that way, because if you think about when you come out Penn Street, railroad tracks this, so you left, you'd have no site issues, it'd be a perfect way. There's no street in front of those people in Penn, they have pretty much concrete that's been probably poured, I don't know, 100 years ago, that's in horrible shape. Then you have all those weeds next to the Oak Project, so it would be a perfect opportunity to realistically go from Chestnut Street, pretty much right around Raspberry Avenue. If you took, I don't know what's gonna become of the Oaks property, but from the Oaks property down to Penn Street and Church Street, it would be a nice neighborhood reconstruction, and it would be, to me, I look at it as, at the end of, maybe, at the end of the Chestnut Street project, make that the next project. So, so that would be that section of town. Then you go right to Chestnut, you have what we call the Raspberry Avenue, right there near the side of Third, where we did put some sidewalks in, and that's where Jim's project will continue from there on. But to the right-hand side, when you think about it, that's all, nothing but dirt, weeds, just like every other property. They're talking about, we've actually paid rent for that right now. We paid 2,500, I believe, or 2,800 in that range, a month, 26?
2,600.
2,600 a month, or a year, to rent that property, and that's pretty much overflow. We needed that, we originally ended that deal back when we had McCann in the third floor of this city right here, of the city building, because we had nowhere near enough parking, so we created that parking down there. But then, again, then you come up to, to Woodland Avenue, there, they're talking about a closure there. The Packer House has some concerns, we've looked at the rear of the Packer House and that parking configuration back there. You know, we're averaging, some days there's as many as eight buses come into that Chinese restaurant, so we're looking for a way to take care of that situation at the same time, and we feel we can, we can bring them in the back of that, keep them off of Market Street, so that's an issue. And then if you go up to Race Street, we have a property on the north side of Race Street. If you go up there right now, you see about three abandoned boats, and I'm always sending the police department up to move the cars, that type of stuff, so. And again, that, and I know Jim cut trees and all that kind of stuff down in that area. And then you go up to the last one, Packer Street, which is, which is again, the Moran property, but there's, there's some negotiations with Bimbo about expanding up there, and they need some railroad there, so. I didn't want to get into a lot of details tonight, but I wanted to say, this is a huge project. This could be huge for the city of Sunbury, a huge impact, a positive impact, this could affect a lot of neighborhood that's in there. And I'm not gonna sit here and tell you we're closing or we're not closing, and I'm not telling you we're gonna buy property, we're not gonna buy property, there's some funding involved in it, there's opportunities involved in it, and I think we would be amiss if we didn't at least make an effort to work with these people. So, all I'm asking council for tonight is approve for me to continue, because if, if three of you don't want to do it, then we'll tell them we don't want to do it at all. I think we could attack a lot of Blight and fix up a lot of neighborhoods with this, and all I'm asking is a couple of months to be able to sit down and be able to say specifically, here's what the plan is, and then we'll all get to vote on the plan when it's said and done.
Well, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
At the Race Street area of the railroad track, let me just say it this way. Word on the street is that you wanna purchase some of that property that's involved with the railroad to make a parking lot for your ASA.
I have a second parking lot now, it sits there empty. Why would I need to buy it? And word on the street, I don't know what word on the street means, but no, if you walk on the other side of that street, you will see that that gentleman on the other side, we made him fix these sidewalks in that whole corner, and I believe the county fixed, there is a padded corner from it. You look at those sidewalks that have been crushed and smashed over there, and we've written letter after letter to the Conrail, or not Conrail, Norfolk Southern. To get them fixed, and you can't get anything done. So, that's the same, that, that property isn't even different than anything else. I would imagine, if they, you know, I don't know how, what the right of way on the railroad would be, so I'm saying, that property must be, I'm gonna guess, 40 feet maybe, or something like that, but easily, you took the bottom part there, and we redid that road and put a parking lot there, those people that are parking with their boats, and I don't want abandoned boats there, but people on Vine Street, I know on, on Street Street tonight have nowhere to go. Even just if you don't put any parking there, if you don't even pay them or anything, but you gotta maintain it. We're maintaining the thing anyway, Jim's people, or Dale's people are maintaining it anyway.
Are they abandoned boats, or is that just where folks park their property?
Well, there's one that's licensed, and there's one or two that's not licensed, two that are banned, and I'm trying to get the police to fix, if they can use that, there's no plates on them either, but they have those ID numbers that when you get your registrations on them. We're trying to see, we go to the fish commission to find out who owns these things and how they even got here.
And who's the property that needed sidewalks fixed and sidewalk?
That property right there, if you, if you look along the street, the sidewalks are crushed all the way down through there. There's no sidewalks there, pieces.
Fair.
That's the railroad property, though, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
What would be the outlook or timeframe on this railroad project?
Well, I'm thinking a couple of months, definitely by the end of the year at the latest.
Would we have to worry about detours and?
No, no, no.
Traffic?
And like I'm saying, all we're gonna do is, I just want it to be okay to come back eventually with a plane, and say, "Here's the plan, guys, we're gonna vote on this plan, yes or no, what do you want to do?" But I want, I don't want to spend a lot of time, because the part there between Penn, I don't know if anybody here lives on Penn Street, but that part there would be, you know, that would be a significant amount, but, and, and I would want to talk to someone like Jim, who's more knowledgeable, you know, we need to at least sit down and, and somebody look at that and say, "This is a million-dollar project," or "It's a $300,000 project," or whatever that may be. But it clearly would clear up a nice neighborhood.
A year ago, Dave, I got a quote to do Penn Street, and because it's cement, and we can't just lay over it because of cement, they put in a hole after a while, it's gonna run out, we actually have to jack him, we're looking to close a hundred thousand just to do from Fourth to Third. So, that would be a good improvement if we could get, get that done.
Oh, yeah, and that's wide enough there for you, if you guys think where the railroad track comes down through the name, and everybody parks it now, but the weeds are about eight foot high, and again, that's railroad property, but people are just parking on different angles there, and that's nothing but stone. So, you could actually put a, an all-street parking right in there for, put a lot of cars in there, for the neighborhood to park at. Yes, sir?
What's in this for Norfolk Southern?
What's what?
What's in this for Norfolk Southern, what are they after?
Closures.
Why?
Because the federal government gave them X amount of millions of dollars to put closures in, and they're trying to get not just in Sunbury, everywhere in Pennsylvania, and I guess the whole East Coast. They have to do so many closures.
The reason I'm asking you, this is the only city on the line between Hardestburg and Williamsport, which has got a 20 mile an hour speed limit for the railroads. Every other city's got 50. Now, if they close enough crossings in Sunbury, they can probably get 50 mile an hour proof in Sunbury as well. Now, if they close enough crossings in Sunbury, they can probably get fifty mile an hour proof of Sunbury as well. Now, are you happy if these, these trains coming through, one of the, there were tank cars full of LPG and chlorine and gas and stuff, doing fifty through our city?
Nobody's gonna do fifty mile an hour through the city.
But do it through Milton?
There's too many accidents.
We're not doing this to increase it, Frank, we're doing this to make the city better.
No, I'm talking, they're, they're going high on this, I'm not trying to help you guys out, they're doing it for themselves here.
That question was asked to him, Ward, when we met with him, and they said they're not increasing the speed through the city, they said that here in public.
Well, not wanting to.
She said to you, they're doing the same thing, that question was asked. They're doing it for safety, because they have to put new signals and lights up, and they have to do different markings for the thing, and the government gave them so much money to do it, and they, cost-wise, it'd be more if they had less crossings to do it, is what they pretty much told us. Jim, is that what you got on that trip? And that's why they want to save money by closing some of these smaller crossings, like Penn Street, Church Street, and stuff like that. And that's mainly, it wasn't to increase the speed through the city, they told us.
Well, I would be a bit cynical about that, to just based on what's happening elsewhere.
Usually what's said and what is done are usually two different things.
I fully understand what you're saying, but I, I would take that word out, because of the size of the city.
Or would you send the cops and the rest of, if they go back?
So anyway, I want to make that a motion, if you'd at least proceed on this, and I'd like council support. I have another second.
Kramer?
Yes.
Mister?
And you're just doing the research? Yep.
Yes.
Right there?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
There's music at a park at six-thirty, Artie Lapp tomorrow. Who's singing tomorrow? Oh, that is the Artie Lapp, all right, Randall Genley Band, July fifth, Kenny Little Jenkins. July twelfth, Larry Smith. Anything else from the Better in the City? Yes, sir?
I have a question about blighted properties, not the railroad, but all these houses that are sitting here.
Yep.
You want to bring new police into this city, how about all these blighted properties? Why don't you give it incentive to some of these young cops to come in and purchase one of the homes that be living in this town? Give them a little bit of the tax break, you know, a couple of years to fix up one of these places. Then we'll have some police in this town that live, actually live here.
You can't do it that way, that's what I'm saying, you need civil service, you need, there's procedures that go through, advertise and testing.
I realize that, but when they do the testing, after their test and they, and they pass, give them an incentive to come to this city. Give them an incentive, there's lots of blighted properties. I buy them.
Yeah, we got about seventy-six on the.
Yeah, so why couldn't you do that?
They have to be done at a public auction, they have every opportunity.
Why can't the city, then, okay, then why can't the city buy them back? That's what I'm saying, and then try, try to give.
The city to a private owner asks for a public auction, but.
Well, how about, I buy them and I give a cop a reduced rate? Just to get some more cops.
That's different, as long as you're the owner.
That's private.
Anybody who's got, once you own, you win.
Because you gotta really do something to get some new cops.
That's a great idea.
You have a damn.
Thank everybody for coming, Bill Ger.
See you soon.
Yeah.